Tu bapatalwa, i three thousand rand enda wenyoba, bapatalwe i five thousand rand. Gesosisatuguesitela ubalomba uchoongwe, engos.
Greetings to you all, Chairperson, members of parliament, and my learned colleagues. I will mainly speak on safety. The bill provides an overall of the safety and health system in our railways and provides legislative for inspectors to inspect and seize material that pose hazard to the safety of our people and of the railway itself. Care must be taken however to ensure that this provision is not used to target informal traders. We have used, we have used the railways to make a living over the years. We have seen that already in some areas. Instead of focusing on safety, Prasa has recently put a ban in church services in trains. What has lifting worker's spirits before work to do with safety? Because on the church trains, they get to be uplifted, they go to work revived. So now, i safety yenzin gyananda, unyendewana kukuchwe abantu abatanda zayo, abatu layo, so that they can get to work bo mua bili. We should focus more on safety than focusing on people trying to uplift themselves, trying to get to work motivated and healthy. So Chairperson, I think lendo kumeka mitateli ngalelo, mi choongi, nina focus on kunezela abantu more than, ukundungi sa ina kesi choonininazo, on safety. I thank you.
Greetings Chair and the Parliament. My name is Atenkosim Kwetoshanda. Kufuneyo kukualaselu, kumba ge yoku ababantu bebetenge sangapambile betenge sawa kui 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 ziti shesolo liwe. Njoba kutufanere zpeli swegye. Na guliando ba guya kuapeli swain konza bazukubaye, ka abantu be sebenzin, be fulu zukutaza ka be sebenzin. Dea komba yena ndoba legle ifane luguenzio, ukutatwe ngalelo, ngukusele, kuno ba kupeli swain konza abantu bazenza yoke makare taka be kutaza na be yekawen, be sebenzin, engos.
Alright. Eh, monoini. I kamalamu, ngo siabo ngaa, Palo Gita, eh, living with illimitation and blindness. Apa ekwan kwa ngo zukisana yake, only assista yena mshange, etu muse zusunza. Eh, indokaala, esungav melaniyo ngayo. Eh, indoyo abolishwa, kwa mapolisa, assist training. Eh, we are kapele training, uku zmenge, because kaluku, eh, kukabantu bakaulinda ambo, benza yoke indoli, vandalizer, infrastructure. Now, i safety inspection. Eh, asuvu melaniye ndoba yenzwe, from eight exasagutogiyakija, eh, ngo five. See, kadi sinoba, i safety maenzu, i safety inspection maenzu twenty-four hours. Eh, because we are limiting the safety for sautitina maenzu, etlashili until was always keep the railways eh, safe. Eh, oshishi no, pagati, assist training, eh, abantu abafundi swa, abanufundi neyo, last net church services. Eh, indoyo, indoyo kupeli swa kwezo zini, ndoka be rongo. Ba lo, kwa be shuniye zawa, ndiksin, baba revived, muzegelo, afika sebenze, kaka claim sebenzin, eh, land was assisting communities. At the same time, eh, it is very much important, eh, ndoba kufocus, kundose safety. Kuna choongwa, isindose, es, 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 es net size treatwe, kukula focus on safety. Issue, issue board members, neselechi, neni potizim, we disagree with it. I A N C, maengasemwzi, i majority. Eh, instead, let us inclusively involve zonki political parties, eh, kwa kwa lantwimbi. Now, i privatization, yere, yere nantika, i training, asuvu melaniye nayi, kumbula ngalo. Eh, i training, we are subsidizing kumende, and abantu abanins, most especially Africans and Blacks. Basidenzi training, ukwenla ba yoke communities, ba yemsebenzin. Eh, ukumende, kwa isubsidizing, iba chikipincha la bakwenla ngayo, ba peke msebenzin. It takes i private business, muzegesu, zituru, kakul, ba lo kwa asafani, nitre, nitre nyona, we are subsidized. Eh, lepe, since I supported eh, kakul, okubanga aba, i training zegle, yoke bakunsa ndoba, is going to be, eh, i training is going to be efficient, eh, be safe, be sebenzana abantu, and I co-privatized, engos.
Greetings Chair. My name is Siabonga Palo Gita. We do not agree eh, with the issue of policing trains because it leads to dysfunctionalities in the train and as a result, we would like to see the police visibility due to the criminal activities that recurrently occur. And secondly, safety. Eh, we do not agree that the inspection or the monitoring occurs only between eight and five late and therefore we request that it be in a twenty-four hour eh, operational system. Pertaining to businesses and church services, I think those who are preview must be allowed to conduct businesses and church services for issues that can be pinned on security and safety. We also disagree with the appointment of board members particularly because then A N C uses its majority stance to appoint eh, board members. We also do not agree with the issue of privatization for the issues or purposes of eh, cost efficiency and owing to the fact that if it is governed by the national government, it will be subsidized. And lastly, we will support the bill eh, if train issue is a multi-collaborated one. Thank you.
Eh, thank you Chairperson. Lo utetayo, Ubuntu Mzileni, from ward thirty-one, Buffalo City, here in the Eastern Cape. Eh, we welcome the broad objectives of the bill, but the abolishment of the railway police has led to serious problems in ensuring safety on South African railways. As a result, there has been a dramatic decline, not only in the safety of the passengers, but also in the ability of Prasa to safeguard critical rail infrastructure. We are bidding within Chairperson to return the railway police over and above the private security that is normally outsourced by the government. But for more effective security and accountability, it will be wise to insource the private security. We welcome the broad objectives of the bill, but with the hope that the privatization of the rail is not sneaked in in this bill. We cannot allow a situation where the government sells or privatize rail for two simple reasons. One, the majority of South Africans are poor and do not own cars. They rely on public transport, which is subsidized by the government, except for the mini-bus taxis. Private transport is expensive. Taxis are convenient but expensive as they are also privately owned. Taxis are not subsidized, yet they are currently the only reliable public transport in South Africa. We would welcome this bill if the trains were fully functional and moving people efficiently. The rail we are talking about has collapsed and people are solely dependent on taxis to commute to and from work. Maybe today we should be talking about how South African government can fix the collapsed rail system and its infrastructure. How does one clean, paint, and secure a house that does not exist? Thank you.
Greetings to the Parliament, the Committee. My name is Ubuntu Mzileni, ward thirty-one in Buffalo City. I support ndia ukasa, um, utetwiloayo. Indo nza funa intetenga, yoke ukusele kolonuntu. Ngoba genji ngatela njwa, utu kubuiselu, ama polisa, ngaphe zuka, kuba kukona, kono kata ba, ba kala, koto agye, kubuiswa kama polisa, ngonke zao, ukusele go. Kanga ba be sebenzana, no, no kata ba kukana. Ngoba ge, indo nekala ngayo, okubagaye kuatengi swa ololiwe benzo, ba be, li shishini nabukaala, isa obuya, ibe tetina, lonto le, kobaa. Abeni be li, ba yahlupega. Okubanzi ma ukupa imali, fu, kuba ba, ba kale, ba, ba sebenze itex, ngoba itex, li shishini nabukaala, kwai, lia yake ipogotin. Nde sami lukutigendi, ya ukasa lo utetwiloayo. Koto agendi ngakasa ukubage, kungaza kubuiselu ololiwe, ba buye ba sebenze. Si ngatetige, ngeng, 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 ngenglila. Koto agendi, ba kubuiselu liwe, ba kudege, ba sebenze, tinga ukasa lo utetwilo, engos.
Eh, ndikala, ungasonde la, ungasonde la, o zauteta, ndondwar, ndifunanjulungi sa, or make this special request. Um, if possible, if we could not repeat the things that have been said, I think we will minimize the time and allow as much more people who would like to contribute as possible. Eh, that's just an appeal and I don't want to limit you, but if something has been said and said again, saying it again for the fourth time might not change much to it, but I don't want to interfere, intimidate your input. It just happened that I wanted to speak just before you spoke, so please, kubekabut.
Eh, mndisbul sale na mingi, gu, Kululi Yonkwa Zevu, bossman, utetayo, from eh, ward fifty, apa, Buffalo City. Eh, mndikala apa, klaryan shalaku yo. We are surrounded by very poor people who depend on farming and who also pride in selling fruits and veg and the winners of funny training is. So, this is tell us in the onea, it could be also included in the bill and obana, people who are selling veggies and fruit is training. Ba fumani permit iso, zo, zo tenge, sa paga za train. And bangga charge money to make is a permit because most of them are indigent, basas fumana pimalisa is a permit. And Sichongjam, also a member of African Farmers Associations of South Africa. So, i critical kakululondele, ndoba na, abantu be tubakwa zuyo tenge sa payana. I also want to challenge i clause twenty-seven, apa kui bill no, clause sixty-three. O twenty-seven, uteta ngae, ngae, ngae involvement, yendo bana, kana, wangbaso fumani funding from parliament and then bana akonabu to fund themselves, ngoku fundraise zela. Ndidi butalaba, agyeku basipashwa ngamasele. Nana is a business person, I don't understand why I should go when funding institution and fund a parliament unless I'm promised something to gain. So we are opening a loophole, payana yoba ma bazfandele, parliament ma i fund, fully le institution. Ina tipe ndiko, mune business yam, because lemali for, ubanga bandifuna, umnatsana namkundo za tax, ndisemu yisa kuenchu o. Kandi yisa constitution, partly funded by the parliament, divula, itu valenda ndoba, what's in it for me? Because is ndoza tax reduction, life, mano nobango yakuenchu o ya seklali. And then o clause sixty-three, uteta ngae involvement, ye minister, kui issues is infrastructure. Eh, ndibuhlungu, k, just apa cross clear really, apa ba ke itongale twenty-eight million pa, ndinolaka ngai hundred thousand. Kaba involve kuis ndoza infrastructure, the very same thing is going to happen. Nde zao yaku, maluma wang, nditindi pa kuporti. Ndivolve paklandu infrastructure, sakamatonga, siti ni, si fumani mne kuis fana ni, zileanza, kapa ngier recently, just before a conference here A N C. Itongonoleanza ngai hundred thousand, lenswa ngai twenty-eight million. So, and ikon ndindokbana, isa was police, akaku klesu South Africans, ndoba na, si involve women stars. Rather, we involve the board and all political parties so that we scrutinize we, all the processes pertaining to we issues is infrastructure that happens at the railway station. Thank you very much.
Greetings, everyone. I am Kululi Levu, bossman from ward fifteen, fifty. Where I stay, there is a poor living condition and most people are actually poor. And largely, people rely on farming by selling vegetables and fruits. And my request is that those people be accorded permits at no cost. And I would like to make reference to clause twenty-seven, which pertains to funding from parliament. And my worry is that we are engulfed by thieves or misappropriators. And also, I would like to make reference to clause sixty-three in which it states that the minister will be involved. And I would like to indicate, underline that if that is the case, ordinarily ministers or eh, the members would claim exorbitant amounts of monies, whereas the infrastructure does not reflect such. Thank you.
Ma ndibulisagoslalo, namalongo, we parliament. I kamalamu ngo tolile, kasitili. Ndi puma be mntanzane ward twenty-four. Eh, ipende na oganye, umkakolo, uyiloayo. Siya wa mkeela won. Koto kwa ngo kufuchani. Eh, umsans Africa, uchoongele, mesi beto so kwa pelis. Ngukalulaan. Si esla ngabe zani, nemego apo amalu, epo uti. Ayunjwa, ngukusenke kusondeela. Wa, oku ye, konye, nobulshelwa, nime okeni, es ti le so politiko. Si molu fukolo, kubaga, kukoi ndo ekfuneka yenzwe, we kuse. Kutinde lo kwa pelis, zonka lulaan. Si bolisa, okuba okuse. Kutinde lo kwa pelis, zonka nye, nobulshelwa. Obusondele yo. Okubanda kanyeka, kompati swa, eku tunjue, nuka magu epo uti, kufuneka, kukriti singwe, kwaiye, onge, ama keela, eso politiko, kufuneka, atatenganga keba, akwenzene, oketu lo kubebela. Umutola ulayo, wa kufuneki, kusebenzise, obonins, kuka anye, amalu, wa, obonins. Kuke tu lo kubebela, kubama ngu epo uti. Kopa, uazi, kui kandelo, nikaloliwe, kufuneka, lukualaselu. Siya za, siya zamkeela inchoongo, es ba, zisa lo mteeto, uyiloayo, kopa. Ngetemba lo kuba, akusunengezo, akutengi swa, kwezi poro, ololiwe, kuma kandelo abukala, kulo mteeto. Asna kufunelaana, nemego apo kulumende, atengi, soka anye, enza, es poro sa bukala, ngesin zatu, es bini, es lula. Uminswa, beno wom sans Africa, basupedi ile, kwai, aban, abanazimo, to ba kemekeke, kwezi tutis kawo ngewo. Esi kaswa ngo kulumende, ngapange kutegi. Is tutisa bukala, siya biisa. Itegisi, zi fani lekile kotoa, zebisa kakulu. Jengooko, sinesa kwa bukala, itegisi. Aska fumani ndaso, ma, de kopa ngo bubupela. Upelwa kwezi tutis kawo ngewo. Es tembe ne kuso, apa m sans Africa, engos.
My name is Tolile Sitzeli, from Tanzania, eh, suka, ndesuka M Tans, eh, from Tanzania in ward twenty-four. I agree the Chair and the Committee. I support the bill. We have, um, in South Africa, we have the challenge of corruption where members of the board are being selected by relations or knowing each other. Uh, I believe that when selecting such boards, all members of the parties must take part in the process of selecting the board. Um, I welcome the objectives of the bill. I'm hoping that you won't privatize the railway that because many South Africans are poor and now they are using taxis and taxis are very expensive because they are private. I thank you.
Eh, no, thank you very much, Chairperson. Disbul sale, kwa wongomdalapa, nganjen. Kamalab, nditapele, eh, from ward three, apa Southern Wood. Eh, no, mine is very simple, Chairperson, and namalongo ako apo. Eh, i, 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 in terms of railway eh, lines eh, to apa, and again, eh, East London. They are very, very bad in terms of eh, how, how the operations are working. So, we really encourage you, if mklaba nika yez, londeleyo, to take a road work nje, from here, East London Station, all the way to Tanzania Station and see the infrastructure, how is the entire situation eh, kwezi stations. Because ufumansbaku mila, nemu itingegu stations and they are not safe for anyone, particularly even abanduan. So we would really encourage eh, board, as a parliament, to make sure that infrastructure is the, is the, is the first point before the passing of the bill. No, thank you very much.
Greetings Chair. My name is Tapelo. I am from ward three in Southern Wood and I thank you and your team. However, railway systems here are in a bad state and I would strongly encourage that you do take a walk and see for yourselves. And also, we would eh, encourage that before the bill is approved or passed, you do consider observing the current state of the railway systems. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Before we take the last speaker in this round, who may take the podium, while I just acknowledge another set of hands, if there are any, so that while he is contributing, the others can take the positions, then we can flow. Are there any other hands of people who would like to contribute? I would like to take more hands if there are any other hands. I looked this side first, this time I'm looking this side first. You are number one, you can come forward. Eh, any other one this side, you are number two, right there waving. Eh, I think I have taken everybody this side. You are number three. You are number four. Da, 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 anybody else this side? Alright. You may, ukubekabut, engos.
Thank you very much. Greetings to the House. My name is Bomanie Ozias Moyo. I am a resident and a student here in ward forty-seven of Buffalo City Municipality. Firstly, before welcoming or rejecting the bill, I just wanted to express how a bit disappointing it is that the bill does not really take into consideration the history of this country and how we even ended up with the railway system in the first place. Uh, I think if we look back uh, to the history of this country, we know that these railways, railways are built on the lands that belonged to communities that were misplaced and displaced through violence. So now, when we are proposing such bills, we should also incorporate those communities, eh, speaking onto, how should they benefit? They should not only benefit by getting rights in these railway systems while traveling to towns for work, but they should also benefit further in terms of entrepreneurship opportunities and also in terms of corporate social responsibility from uh, these government entities that you are discussing. Going further, I also feel as if this bill is a bit in conflict with other regulations that we have pertaining to transport in this country. Because this bill seeks to promote the safety operations and also to expand on the use of the railway system so that we can use the railway system more. But however, we also have other transport regulations that also seeks to uh, to expand the, the road system so that we can also travel more with the roads. Another thing is also, this bill is a bit also not in line with also the regional laws in terms of the railway system. Because I feel as if this bill only limits us, as it says, to the South African railway system. But you know that in South Africa, we also exist within SADAC and we should also be a bit in line with also the SADAC regulations in terms of the railway system and also the African Union regulations in terms of the eh, the railway system and transporting the people of this continent in general. And then one last thing regarding the issue of the service providers that must be hired to come and maintain these things. I feel as if we should be able to, to empower the government entities eh, by insourcing workers and training the citizens of this country so that we might have pride in our infrastructures. Eh, because I feel as if the reason why people end up stealing the cables and the electricity power lines and even the railway steel, is because we do not benefit anything from these things. We feel as if these things, they only serve the purpose of transporting minerals that are being looted by the colonizers, that colonizers back then in nineteen sixty fifty to fifty-two. We keep benefiting from these infrastructures. So I feel as if the bill now should also take all those things into consideration. However, uh, I do welcome the bill, uh, with those, those adjustments to be made to it. Thank you very much.
Dea bulisa, kupa parliament, ndibulisagoslalo, ndigumfundi, yewe wase Buffalo City. Um, ndite, ndif, ndizivu, kubandi tan, ngile, lo mteto ilayo. Goba outatin ngalelo, kumba lielizwe, kuku kulumele, no, no liwe. Goba kunda weslala abantu kona, ndi, 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 ndiziva ukuti, abantu abaxala yena, bafama basenzale, nkonzo yolo liwe. Abazu zito ngo ngayo. Ikakul, kundo zo shishino, ababana yon zuzu. Nde tringa, nde tringa, ya pikisana, no, ngeni mitetowezo, tu, tu, nemikako yai, ngoslobo yenzo angalo. Um, if, 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 ifane langa, yoke ukwazi, ba, is sebenzes, is sebenze, eh, lo mteto ilayo, ukwazi, ba, uvumeli, nalame, inalema zwa, kusadec areas, kukuzo, ifigelenene nagu. Eh, kwabo bani geza inkonzo, kufuneka kesi, kapele abantu, ababetu bashenze zinje, nabanga sebenzi. ababetu bashelezinje nabanga ishebenzi yu. Kuba apela besenza ulapulu mteeto ngengayo ukuti, bayashupega ngikonto ba enzai. Mabuma batatelo ngalelo kaguni gezo, iisunigezi makabisu, engosi.
Nam kela Usbulsela, who portfolio committee on transport. Ikamalambu Bundo Tegana, Tsuka ward four to one. Nam dyayomkeela kakhule bill broadly, but nazundawendiskeptical about them, the bill. For instance, the issue that has been raised, the appointment of board members and the responsibility of the minister. We have seen all of these SOEs failing because the board members, they are appointed approximately to a political leadership of the ANC, unfortunately, because it's the government of the day. My view, I'm sharing the same view as the other speaker here, that the portfolio committee, together with all other political parties, must be given the responsibility of appointing the board members to the CEO, CEO level, so that we get competent people for those positions. And lastly, this thing that has been raised here in the front, see Chombeni, very careful. This thing of outsourcing everything, outsourcing even the safety of our people. Railway police, nandi kula umzagele, ungasose uyo kwenza nandone na railway station because engabantu ababengokobena abalala, kugurite, yeah, in terms of safety. But lastly, I've heard, you have consulted with Unetlek, after public consultations. But kange ndineveni tetan, the other sector, in the transport sector, have you actually consulted with it? Because the taxi industry might be jealous in the process, yeah, taking the front line. So I think you should also involve the taxi industry, again, for safety purposes. Thank you.
Greetings. I greet the portfolio committee on transport. I am Bundo Tegana from ward four to one. Firstly, I do support the bill, however with skepticism because of the involvement of ministers. Given that the appointment is made on the grounds of political affiliation, the committee must be the one responsible for the appointment from the beginning through to the CEO. Also, I heard that reference was made to Unetlek. However, there was no particular reference to the taxi industry, and I am apprehended that the taxi industry might be jealous due to competitive issues. Therefore, I do propose and suggest that the taxi industry must be consulted. Thank you.
Greetings to the portfolio committee, and also greetings to the reality that I see amongst us. I greet you. Ikamalambu Sande Silemanion, I am from ward five, in Bafalo City. I have a problem in terms of this bill. My problem is the fact that, how are we talking about safety when we don't have an infrastructure? What are we protecting when we don't have an infrastructure? Padi meken, ifigelati, so klambesini zindose teteo, patinzalata, indone, izenayo ab. So, let us first look at the infrastructure, then we can talk about indemaya safety. Because i railway zetu, day in, day out, zia tatinta ambos, zia vandalizer, and then we come here and talk about indemaya safety. That's my main problem. So let us go and fix the infrastructure, then we can come back and talk about issue safety. Number two, the issue of appoint a board. I think that one must come to the portfolio committee because we've seen e sugar Escom. We have an energy crisis as we speak in this country because of appoint by ministers. Now, let this thing, it is a tool, a portfolio committee that is controlled by a multi-party thing, yeah. And also, na kasi, na kaifika, no multi-party commit, ma kula sekensu majorit. Because na zolendisbeta, the ruling party is better than majorit. Now, let us move, lendi majorit, and infuse e views from different organizations, so that we can have a proper and functioning country within our country. The last one, enfunu tetalayo. It's the issue of ugu outsourcer, no comrades, we need to put away this thing. Because ugu outsourcer, it's a problem, ugu outsourcer. Let us build a, e, 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 e government that is able, inobana, asumeke, is services is proper, without going to, e, 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 to the private sector. Let us try and build, e, 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 this thing as a proper. Because this deal of insourcing is a problem, as we speak. Because e prices, zia news for by these companies. So let us have e into that is controlled by the government as a sandoni is services, abantu, I thank you.
Deabulisagustalo, ne komite palamente, nguphalele. Ikamalambu Sande Silemanion, ward five, Bafalo City. Tine ngamaki ngalomteto ilayo. Sitetan zaninkukusele, koko duasina sunesakio, sikuselan toni, singekue sakio. Kuba kolo liwe kutatwa intambo, kumoshwe yonge indopana. Umba, umba ge waktongo kupote, joba ipote siya zuguti. Yee ikethwe, itose ninsa, ifuma na ibana malongo, ama ninsa abanga womteto lo, abango mbutolu laulai. Dingathala ge ukuti ngokufa kwe, imi buthemeshuka naye, isa ukwazi ba kaktongo ipote, ikongo ngokfanele kilaye. Masiyake ge ukushebenzi sa, inkonzo zabukala zanga pandle, jabulile.
Thank you so much, Chair. Let me take the gratitude opportunity to greet the parliamentary members and chiefs which are on my right hand side. Wange omtu okoyo, pakati engeni. Ikamalambu Andiswa, Bokfelt, under ward thirty-four. Kuloki siya setimaza, kutekfipuna kon. I'm very much concerned about this bill, e yilwayo. According to na aponsuka kona, we don't even have a railway. The last time there was a railway stations in that area, it was only the time of Apa date system. We only see that there are cables that have been installed in our area going through Remon, Shaba and all that other side of the regions. So, and other thing is, although there are cables that are installed there, we are not much aware of what is gonna happen. One time that the railway staff that has arrived to us, it was only the time they were requesting to us to give support so that those cables may not be stolen. But there is nothing that can assist us as well, so that we can be work in one and one to assist them. So, this bill stating about is safety, mostly. But I don't see any safety around the stations that are around Bafalo City. Cables have been stolen right, left and center. We don't see anyone who's been arrested based on the stolen cables. The other thing of the appointment of CEOs also a challenge. If you can take note of that, most of the speakers that have spoken here, that is a critical condition. It will be wise that that appointment from the minister can be taken for indo here seriously because it may happen that appoint someone who may not even have qualifications. That what is also, it gives us a problem in South Africa because everyone who's being appointed, some of them or most of them, they don't even have any knowledge of what they are working on. If we see as well, and Escom, all those things that we are suffering from, because those people who were appointed, some of, most of them, they don't even have maybe qualifications. They are not much aware of what they are working on. So the appointment of the CEO, I think it must be something that may be taken seriously because we don't want to suffer, guys. We've been suffering for quite a long time. It's almost like twenty-something years ever since we have a democracy in South Africa, but things become vague day by day. So these things, I think we have to consider that while you're gonna amend the bill or you're gonna set this bill to be constitutionally, so that of what the community have said to you based on the appointment, because we have the challenge of this appointment. Also, in terms of working relations, I think those things must also be considered by the parliamentary and the minister as well. Work relating system needs to, e, e, of which, and there must be those who, people who gonna be, e, 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 eliso, elibans, kui kui do esfana, nemozomishebenzi. Inspectors must make sure that they are doing their job duly, regardless of uba ombu uba appoint you or what. But and there must be e sana, esifan, kuka party, anabamige zwa uba babene authorities, zuka ba party kozu now. Because it's like we are living in a situation whereby we don't know where we are going to, whether we are going backwards or going forwards. So those things must be considered. I thank you for the bill.
Ma ndisbulisele, ikamalambu Andiswa, Bokfelt, Tsuka ward thirty-four, etimbaza, kufuchali nasekon. Ti bulisa ipalamente, ne koke lizo mthonyama. Aponsuka kona, aziko ishobo, o kanyee imizi layolo liwe. Sa kabeluku ibona, ngeta shale apa tetu kanyo loksalu kalulo. Ka intesibo na yotina zikaposo kanyee intambo. Kwenzi wa utetato twano kupela, na atikaba, kukthela into yoba ezindambo kanyes kaposo zinge biwa. Kwa ye, ukthalaba kwetu, kumulumene, nokuseleko, kwezi indambo. Okunye, ukuthongo, kumpati swa kanyo kwa minister, makutateli ngalelo. Kuba, e, o minister, na maslaga niwake, bayatan, ukthonga bantu, banke nazo isa kon, o kanyaba unqualified, siya ibona gelo ndio isenzeka, ku Escom. So ndikela into yoba ukuthongo, kwe CEO, unikezo eliso elubukali. Kuba sit abasogolai. E, 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 into ndikela, ku kwenye se ubu jeloane, pakati kua bantu, ngabantu, engosi.
Can we kindly request the owner of a blue car? We don't know the make. Its registration is DS eighty-eight YXGP. To please kindly go to your car as soon as possible. It's a blue car, registration DS eighty-eight YXGP.
Thank you, Chair. Let me greet the parliamentary portfolio committee and all other leaders that are here. Ikamalambu, tengu poipo, ikalan, ward twenty-seven, Bafalo City. Ndemela nje, unga pindizi ndose teteo, kodo ge ukwamkeela, this bill. Kananchalo ndisiti, kuyafuneke pa kololiwe, kulumte nukutetwa ngao, kwe security. Ingabi yendo yeklaselitile, ne klaselitile, kodo ge. Ebekono, umdu bekwa itetela, yapinde essecurity, ibengu twenty-four hour, so that kuzo kwazi, nalendo yoku biwa, kwe kapos, ibena kukwalaselo. Okunye klandela, enti, nti amkeela ngakona nipili. Na lomtambi, we inkonzo, apa kololiwe, ay, ndikundisindisichu. Kodwa ani kasi lendo, siti zikoni inkonzo, apa sitlala konasipinde, sifuli inkonzo, apa kuluoliwe. Diqumba, abanya bandi abakapazela, lo ndukubake. Le, ngunwe kosikuo, e, umdu wonke. Ongundu na lungelo, lokwenza, lendo afila dati iraiti kui. Kukutavu zwa bana makarechi, e, e, kawa, abanya banda bazo kwazi. Ukukwela kula makarechi, ibangelegengoku. Lendo kanoliwe, inge bikho, ikua lekumdu wonke, okukpebele. Diqumba, nganga ba, iba kange, ipalamentari committee ne, yee enze, consultation kona, mshela zebekwa itetab, kundimwe consultation, omuteksa, nava kanye ezinye, ingela. O kanye, amanyama itandelo, otu otu, kase nava, ba consulte, ukavu italende, ngabi ngachabantu ngoku. Ba fola ku itkanele, ngalaniwe, kuba londo yengeze, ngalenzungu zulano, pana ba, tiamkeela nipili, engosi.
I greet the parliament committee and all the leaders here. I do welcome the bill, and I would like to comment about safety and security. Somebody did make a reference to the issue of security. However, I do want to emphasize that there must be a twenty-four hour security system. And secondly, I'm going to raise the issue of churches against the backdrop that even myself, I am a pastor. But we also have church members around our vicinities, but we cannot allow churches inside the train. Lastly, if the parliament did not do a thorough or extensive consultation, I propose and recommend a further consultation in respect of the taxi drivers, because it might lead or initiate conflict. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before the last speaker, my sense was that there was satisfaction of the contributions before this last group. But in case somebody had just stepped outside, they still want to contribute, I would like to acknowledge hands, if there are any, so that we can go towards closure. Alright, I will start right at the back with a cap, you are number one. The next one, you are number two. Which other, is that one, was the hand up? Three, you're number three. You are number four, you are number five. You are number six. Can we agree that those are the last hands of people who would contribute? Can I have an amen? Can I have an amen? Can I ever allow the amen if we agree? Thank you. Those were the last hands. Uka kobe ka po, engos.
Okay. Maninbulise ngapagati. Ndi vmele ndi ti nganani sibaza. Ikamalam, jengu mastolechak, ndisuka kwa word twenty-six. Iwa tese, kumshala wasegnahuni, kumshala wamachame. Njembaa, umzegelo apa, siv milana, kule ndo yale safety si zamay. Ti za uzani ndo eti, ndibawela mna, ezitishi zibi elu, kala rasteta ngale safety. Kwenze la ngabizoni nda uksenjogia uelogo uso. Nabandu ba beka tilis cables, zbe kandina ba basif, kua bazalbe biel, banga soguli kaku. Soglo ndokele yurubi kwa zoe, ilo creator i- i- jobs londo le. Kwezo jobs ke, ndipinda nditi benitela. Kunga atikla, umzegelo kusukulu ngisuzla be Bafalo City. Sife kusti wa lo tenda, ini ku umdu wasegnahuni. Kodwa kulu ngiswe Bafalo City ngapo. Babi abanbi litala, besitenga ez- ezo jobs, betenga kwa inasonezo tendas. Kufuna ukala ke, kuchekisha banda bazala kwezo areas. Ti zegle ndo umzegelo, nje bazishala paglanla kweza lalikwakwasegnahuni. Kukuezitishi so ndile ku uti pa, umtanzane station imanrothi i- i- iti. Ezazitishi kakula banda wasegnahuni, baby bebe ngweta kala zitrainzes kweza pa, fu ukwela, fu i- transport. Te yenge ngoyinde ipinde yenzeki, se ataya la kuba party. Kla ngaba, umzegelo kukoi basaris, kukoi missebenzi ko pras, baba konstarisha banda ngaze zalalis asingi le ap. Because itla sheninja, banda wana, bes ndausuka kuso, swabona beka figelele, kupangela kuso, kukuezitrizni ndun. Se ataya na dati, kweza school, baba baba pay visit, kweza high schools around. At least ma motivate na banda wana, baba niki direction. Kwenze lba no kono pushi solibekone zlali. Ina bi lendo le, itana le tolopizoto, itla sheninja. Mani ngabimte manish.
I greet the House. I am mastolechak from word twenty-six, from Nahoni. As we agree about the safety issue, first let us fence the railway facilities and that will generate employment opportunities. And also when jobs are created, let us first consider people within close proximity before we consider those in other areas. Pertaining to the issue of basaris, I do request that children from surrounding schools or high schools be considered first. That will enhance social development within those areas. Thank you.
Greetings to the House. My name is Seviwe. First and foremost, I would like to start by saying that I do support the bill, although I do see that there might be a minor problem when it comes to the security. It's not gonna be a big problem, but it's a suggestion that we should look into. I do understand that Prasa has a security services app, but we also understand that the South African Police Services have an overflow and overflow of applications and people do get trained with the South African Police Services and some of them do not make it to the finalization of being employed there full-time. If the Prasa Department can actually look into those students that were there trained by the police services to be incorporated to the security services of Prasa, at least the basic skills of the police in South Africa that will have that instead of wasting money, retraining them on security purposes. That was my only point. Thank you.
Oh, diabulisa ke kui poti, i- i- parlamente ekoyo namchange, mnan ndingwineka peyti. Di napanje namchange, divakabu sunu ngakuti, kubu batinas ngabatengis. Si ngabatengis, nje no kobe stengis, abetwa kwezitishi, na lapesans. Divakabu sunu ngukwulu mtetotana, tinake ngukusina zukwazunekwa, infume so ba sitengis. Kugu tengsa kwe tu, susu sikate ziko. Si kulissa banda wana, se abafundis. Oh, kuku ide yenzeki. I traini, asitlalewa tlazi si zawiyeke, na tlazi zaubuwi. No koo se akala, lutu olutuma, zinweke. Di kolo buza, kuba party ba, ba titi nasenzinjani. Koba asikuwa zukuyakuza nda ule teksi, se zinabwana tuba zozo tengis. Di kende ba kesibonele, si moyeke, no kona kuti kupshu. Kuba akwapo si ngatoshua koli, koba sesi yaga, nititi nasesi ba dala, asikuwa zuba si ngapangeli. No kuba akwala kwe tu pasitengis ama orange, iliye nse susa ngahika te ziko. No kuba lulaku uti, ukua zukui ze tonopini, imaliye traini iya figelele. Di kende ba ke no koo, ukhulme do pete yo, no koo magasi selisiso, si ngabatengis, engos.
I greet the Board of Parliament. My name is Wineka Pei. I am said as we, as vendors and that we are precluded from this system. You would recall that by selling or trading, we eradicate poverty. And my question is, what should we do? Because we do not have places to sell and other places are already occupied. And you will remember that at my age, we are not even employable. So I would like to know what is being done for us. Thank you.
Afternoon, Parliamentary Report. Ikamalam, jengu Sandilem Kwashini, wa word twenty-two in Tanzane. Di nemi buzo kanye im contributions ezimbinika. Oh, kuka la, oku kala sereka itrain iya hamba. Iya kwa zitrain kuge hamba, yo iti somewhere along the line, yavele email out of the blue. And ngukwene pala, pakati kuyoni ngabna information, no ba kwenze ngatu nina. Amatla shamaninsegelo, ndo iya iposa, i- 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 ite incha, ubu na bandu beti, baba balake, nje pakati station, because abaya zba nguntraini, and byapa ngela ba late missebenzi, and there's no information conveyed to them. So namchabu, kuka ngu paga misai ndo iti, ke itwalase lolo, ndo in the near future, kai trains isaubu yangu. So the tabandu, ba italewe kai isau ma, if isau ma, isau ma for how long? Baba zukwenza, i- 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 amatrebo around that. So di akala, kende ba, iba kona, indo eyenzwa, yonba i- communication system ngapagati training, that conveys that message bandu easily and quickly. Number two, ito, ilu kona, itla shenkungiala tata kai isa ndofige station isauhamba. Kuba akama itla shanapa kwe I feel, ingati fige ya amgamsenyane, as a result of the tubo, no kuba na ba isuke la yonkuge hamba yo, ba ubu nza kala lletlolo. Changu, uku ba i- ten minutes, fifteen minutes, nje kala kuba, iki kwalase we lolo, ndo kule billionswa yonkuku. Not that, mchabu kede funalandi, so pati hi chonge, because aban dabani nseba isewesa itrain apa i- island and kakulu, kalkangela. Because in terms of the price series, nekulu kakulu. So di akala ke, i- chonge, lendo yati frame, kai sa ndofige station, nina plimesu itata before iha. So that ku kwa ziku la, yonkwenza kala kwa bandu. Changu bi kona, na lapo injela, i- 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 communication, no kienzi, what to say? Itrain isauhaba, baba ngakuweli ba bandu. Because, baba nganabe isuke la, ite, yonba disa opuna, we platform le, i- i- kuyo. So the city kuma, kenpakamete suggestions, kuzi pinengos.
Greetings to the Parliament. My name is Sandilem Kwashini, word twenty-two in Tanzane. I have two questions or contributions. I have a concern that when the train travels, it will just stop without being told why. Is it stopping or when? How long it will take? Has it stopped? It has stopped? Some people, it will impose danger on people because some people will jump out of the plane while it's in the middle of nowhere. Secondly, I would like to comment in the issue that sometimes we know that when a train operates, there's a time set for it to depart, but sometimes it will depart before the time that was set and people will just push one another to get there and we are worried that people will be getting injured. So I would like you to consider the issue of time of departure so that people won't get injured. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and his members of the Parliament. I've got some issues here, Mr. Chair, and questions. Okay, the first question I would like to ask, what happened with the ghost of Prasa? There was investigation and I've been following that investigation, but there's no breakthrough. I really want to know why there promoted the investigation. And according to the clause regarding the permit, who can apply for the training? And I've got another one, Mr. Chair. We advise Parliament to have road shows in all the areas of where of the youth regarding job creation and training. We want to bring the Parliament's attention to our scrap yards, to close all the criminals' violations, our railings, rail lines, and benefit, and benefiting of those criminals. That's all, Mrs. Chair. Thank you.
I greet the Chair and the Members of Parliament. I have questions and question one is, what happened to the investigation that was underway at Prasa? Because at some point, I was following the investigation, but I do not recall.
Sorry, I think he was speaking English. He's speaking in Afrika. Umbozo otan uti ndinao. Kwa kukupandu, olalu senzeka kwa Prasa. And ndandu lulandela, kodwa agenda laseka, kuba andas balapele lapi. Ngago oko benkelu buzo, kuma lunga Parlament, kuba olopandu, lunda onina. Umbozo esbinen now. Omulumene, no kwenze sundululo, ndio yoba i- parlamente, i- chonge umba, kubwenzio kwe missebenzi, inga kumbi kwa bandu abashtelele kilaye, engos.
I greet you, Mr. Chair, the Board Members of Parliament, and Chief Crystal Raiders from the Grikwa Royal Council. I have one thing I want to ask is, can Parliament make it, make it clear who can make, who can apply for that permit? And have road shows in our areas to bring awareness to our, to our youth and elders for training and employment in businesses? Thank you.
Greetings to the Parliament and the, diabulisa kui Parlament na kui Komitea. Ikamalam, jengu Crystal Raiders from Ma Grikwa. Di kela ndu, kaku sereba ngubu, ba mi ofanele, kuba afage iselu. Si no kukava, ba ni no ono kulu ngelo, kucha afage le selu se, semvume, yoso kusaleku, kuzo loliwe. Diabule.
Manbulise, kui Parlament ngubu banzi, dibulise kui portfolio zone, kubu banzi, engos. No, na ndzautetanjee, izindu esimbini, itla shalipansi, amatlabani ngadise ipilili. Ndi ku, ndi, ndi diawamke lume tetolu, le bil, di amgeela ngazantle shu- shu futi. But ndine problem, na lomte to, because otu kumese ndaba yeh safety, of which, as much as babi mesewe chilo, amatlabana ngapambili dati, ingabale safety is a kwenzo api, kungekwa structures, because ndi wutumzani, ndisuke wa twelve, kwa one, M Tanzane Station, upasha le, nansigale rofu zusuki le, and at the same time, cables aziko. Eyo nando, ingamandla, nduza itrapaze lampati swa, kani shalela le bil. Zawenzumzegelo, nesitishi esiselu ndri. Nesitishi esiselu ndri asifavi favor, yaba ndu ba kuti, kufichane ne ndabo Zuko. Ngokobu chonga, it distance, suppose, as a station, se remover too, i- fichane ne dumping site, e ndabo Zuko dumping site, pamgeke tiasen gongu in. Because if usino kate la bandu, si za utabandu, si ba chongi safety abo, klabe ngapagati, kuku kuku metro rails, bati, klabe suka, patatititiamse ndebe, ambe, machuli nba ambe, klabe nukutre, bakiliswa zmotu. So londo le, yonitilba, ingaske, keni kwa lasele fetwa, because ababa ndaba kusalekanga, keni chonge kubu kala, because baba kubu kala, unansiku, ummetro rail, esmituza, sondesa, istichba, and at the same time, kwa esasitishi eselu ndri, I saw station na, nklani motati woku asbon, I saw station zinova, si ngaba gans, istichba kwe la bandu, engos.
I am Dumisan, diabongi from word twelve, kwa one in Tanzane. I greet the Chair and the Members of the Parliament. I will speak on two issues. I must indicate that I support and welcome the bill, but I have a problem with the implementation of it owing to the fact that there are no systems or structures as yet. Secondly, the issue of laundry stop does not favor cater for people from Dabo Zuko and therefore it should be moved near for those people, given that they travel considerable long distances and that poses dangers for them such as being involved in accidents. And I therefore propose that the railway station be moved nearer for those people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I ask that we give all our contributors and all of us a big round of applause? Thank you, thank you very much to each and everyone who had the courage to give your inputs. We truly appreciate it.
Sibulela wongu mtoke waza pambili wazo nigeza izinvoza ke, sibulela kakulu.
I will repeat something I said at the beginning as I try and explain what will happen from here going forward.
Jiza opinda kindo benkenda ichonga pambili njabani ngakrisa kutisokube gasi ti ningu kusuke danglinda.
Because I think the majority of people who are here now were not here when I introduced the issue.
Diakungbaki abandabani nsibenge kunkela klasa benthecha ngapambili.
What I said, which I'm repeating now, is that if you didn't speak or you came. You were not late, you were delayed and therefore you couldn't really contribute. It is not all lost.
Bentheke ngapambili, ukubaki wuya wa late, wa fika late, kanyulu kwanapuli basagekona. Aingaga yiko, uzaukwazu kuti, ngaifak uluvoluakon.
The process of written submissions is still open.
Kusavulekilekba unapalapansu kogo ofunu ktecha.
On my extreme left, your right against the wall there.
Apanga se nene kwami, ekotlo guni.
Those are parliamentary staff who are able and willing to take your written comments or they can give you a form which will indicate with an email address where you can send your written submission at a later stage.
Kabasebenzi, kabeta mapepa, abazawo, ugnigeza onupale panzi. Enai email address, apo zaukwazu kuti, unapala uluvoluakon uzaukwazu tumela kona.
So that process is still open. If you didn't have an opportunity, it's not all lost once more.
Isavulekile na lenko boke, kuba ofunukwenzanjalu, aingaga yiko.
The question that always arises after we have come here, we have spoken so much, what then happens of our inputs?
Um buzho ye bakonu kuti, senzwa ndoni izinvozi tu envalo basis kabilo uted.
This province is the sixth province we are visiting today and this is our last day in the Eastern Cape.
Elipondo, gelipondo le standatu. Esese asebenza kulo, lusukuloka bela genamplange kwe lipondo.
We have Free State, Northern Cape and Western Cape. We are still going to do.
Sesazaya Free State and Northern Cape na se Western Cape.
Once we are done. The other thing, sorry, before I go to once we are done. Part of what they are doing there other than the form I explained is to capture every input that has been made.
Any ndokabaya nza basebenza basa Parliament, kusikulela yonke uluvoltu abewa glinda.
There are also recordings. So that they can go back and listen if there are anything they might have missed.
Ukono shikulele kwa yonkuti, banga buyalu mva ba jonge, bama mele kubaba kona indo ye baglibal.
So that makes sure that there is nobody who spoke and whatever they spoke has not been recorded.
Yes, kuti yonke ndibitetiwe iya shikulele.
So once we go back after we do the last three provinces, there will be a consolidation of all these inputs from nine provinces.
Kasase kribileke uonge lomsebenzi, sesiye sayawo wonga maponga, ama, ama pondo alato ba. Sizautibani sa zonge ezimalo.
There are two things in the main that have come out so far.
Seko nagisindu esimbini ezesa balasela.
There are inputs that are specific to the bill as I introduced it.
Be okonake izinvo ebezi kokele kulumtecho ilwaye.
There are also inputs that are very good inputs and comments, but do not have space in the rail safety bill.
Seko nagisindu ezi lungile, kotwa ke ezina nalo indau kulumtecho sitetanga.
Our priority will be those that are related to this bill so that we produce a report which we must discuss amongst ourselves, then submit to the National Assembly.
Esakulaku ogenka, ezese izinvo eze pegisela lomtecho ilwaye kozoku seleku. Esagwenze ngalungao, sibese yambis.
Those that are outside the ambit of the bill before us.
Ogo kebe kutetiwe omge trapazeli lomtecholu sitetanga namplange.
Those that affect us as this portfolio committee on transport. We will look into them and see how we process them going forward.
Ogo ke wu, sizo wu, tetanga lomtecho ilwaye be setanga, sizaukwalase la sijonge sisi sita te ngalelo kuzo zonge ndobezete ngalo lomtecho ilwaye.
For example, in all our visits, we have representatives from Prasa.
Umzegelo kwe wonge oguamba kwezu, sibena abandabamele abasuka kwa Prasa.
They are taking notes.
Bapa napansi.
We expect them to come and tell us what they are going to do with all what people have raised so far.
Sili ndelebo onake bastraze lukute bazagwenza ndoni ngesi ndo abantu batetengas.
So don't think whatever you have said that is not in the bill will be lost. That is just an example.
Wanga nguti yonke indoge, wanga ibiteto yleno isa ulashlekanje, umzegelo londo ndu ngawonelo.
Once the committee has adopted a report either supporting this bill to be taken forward or whatever we'll agree on, we'll submit a report to the National Assembly.
Savite kase kribilese sesibanse yonke lenkela. Zayambi sa sisi sekumtecho inri wisomtecho.
Once and if the National Assembly adopts our report in support of this bill, we then pass it on to the National Council of Provinces.
Kukubaki inri wisomtecho yawamke la, lomtecho ilwaye. Isa utatake uluzeni ku ikomhu le siswe, ikomhu le siswe. Le, lomkakose.
Yonale, National Council of Provinces. Uba iliku umhuke ankenseka ngale. That is why I made that distinction earlier between the National Assembly and the National Council of Provinces.
Yon tekenza ke, kuba kushuke.
Because both these Houses have got a different role to play.
Koba ezindu esimbini, senenimsebenzo shuke neyezinza.
Once the National Council of Provinces have exhausted their process, they are satisfied with this bill to be passed.
If the National Council of Provinces yanel segili, kaya yonke lenkubo, kuba ma kobe.
They will then pass it on to the state president to sign it into law.
Isa uluzesa kungu mongamien, ukuzi punyezwe benumtecho.
That is the process from our public hearings to the end.
Yoke lenkubo usuke la kumamela izinvozetu, izinvozeni yofike la kipabili.
It is our desire that we could conclude this piece of legislation before our term ends in Parliament.
Kumono wetu basa kweba, wonge lomtecho, lomtecho, pamba pele klasa lete Parliament.
However, if we can't do that, the next Parliament will certainly take it where we left it and conclude it.
Ubagasikwazu kwenzanjalu, ipalamente landela, isa utatala lomsebenzi ikube gene naavu ukuli.
So we thank you once more for coming out on a Sunday morning and making your contributions.
Siyabulela ke ngopuma kue nungekawi, nizo fagi izinvozi.
We look forward to your additional written comments, should you have any, in the way that I have advised earlier on.
So na ngazalela kubana ngabangi pale panzi njawa benchilo ngapambili bana ngafaka i izinvozeni nisbale panzi nis tumelinge email.
At this point, we would like to bring this meeting to a conclusion.
Gelutu baginga tando kuti seva gelelta nganisu.
There is lunch that will be served.
Kukono kujoglu ngisiwayo.
We kindly request that you remain seated.
Nza kela kuti kubekinixale panzi.
So that we can, you can be then directed as to where and how you will be served.
Ukunzeke nikaze lukuti nizakfumananjano kujya.
The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much.